Zoid Hazer has arrived. Thank you, everybody. I want to call the meeting to order. And we have one item on the agenda, which is a request from the pool committee. So I will turn it over to the distinguished chair, Matt Zaff.
Great, thank you. Basically, as a quick background, I don't know if you all got the little summary that I sent out, but basically, earlier in the year, we had adopted a policy that you all had approved, or we recommended a policy, which then you all approved, of no swim lessons whatsoever. There are two main reasons behind that determination. One was the need for social distancing. You know, most swim lessons typically are pictured as in-water and touching. And then the other issue was just the total capacity of the pool and not wanting that to impact it. Since we've been open now a couple of weeks, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from parents requesting the ability to have swim lessons out of water, one of the issues that was brought up was the fact that due to our having the pump issues, and then in addition to after that failing inspection due to the shower issues, the swim team was, in essence, sort of caused two weeks of in-water instruction that they would have already had. And so the swim team is ending this Saturday. And part of the swim team ending, though, means that we're now going to be freeing up a lot more time for lap swimming. So we're adding 19 and 1/2 hours of additional lap swimming, starting on Monday. And you could multiply that by six if you wanted to, because each of the best six lanes available during those 19 and 1/2 hours of additional time. And so what we've come up with is a way to still, to allow swim lessons, but with a, in a specific capacity. Number one would be that the lessons can only be conducted from out of the water. So there'd be no in-water lessons purely, what we call, deck taught. Two, they could only take place at times when we have six lanes available for lap swimming. So there would still be five lanes available for lap swimming, which is, you know, more than there is during the daytime when we only have three. That the instructor must, must wear a face mask at all times. That the swim instructors be restricted to being either town residents or swim team coaches, who are technically considered town employees. And then that we will require the resident to reserve a lap lane through the normal process, which would then also count towards one of their three lap lanes per week. They would also be required to make a separate town pool reservation to account for the instructor taking up, you know, one of the 50 people capacity. We would only allow one swim lesson per slot, if you will, timeframe for lap swimming. So it couldn't be like we'd have five lessons going on at once, and all of a sudden we're down to one lap lane. For residents, it would purely be one per slot. And at all possible, this, this sort of a, partially, we would rely on residents' cooperation, but to have the swim lessons only be in the far lane, what we call lane six, which is basically the one that's basically as far away as you can from the shallow end, which would allow for the instructor to walk up and down the side of the pool, most distant from all other people. Again, if a resident is, you know, for whatever reason, saying they want to have lane six, I would think the instructor would defer to them. That's why that one aspect of the rule was specifically "as best possible," similar to how we had done when we asked residents who were swimming lap lanes to get out at different ends of the pool, understanding that some residents need the ladders. I think that covers it. And, you know, I'll take any questions.
Okay.
The pool committee was unanimously in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I'm supporting the pool committee on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoid Hazer. Do you have any questions?
Barbara, you're muted.
Oh.
There you are.
Oh, I agree with our council president.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Circa, do you have any questions?
If you're muted.
Sorry, I just joined, so I don't know what the question about...
The question is that the pool, the pool committee requests regarding swim lessons. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr.
Student also required to wear a mask. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Is the student also required to wear a mask?
No, because when you're in water, no one who's in water is required to wear masks. In fact, specifically, you're not supposed to. I would go so far as to say not allowed to wear masks when you're actually in the water. Wearing the mask in the water presents a safety risk to anyone who's swimming. So the student, when they're in the water, would not be required to wear a mask, but when they're out of the water, absolutely.
All right. And are you assuming no instruction occurs out of the water, or?
Um, most of the time, are you saying for the student, like, the student wouldn't be out of the water?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, most, most of the time, there's very little out-of-water instruction. And, you know, personally, if I was someone who had a limited amount of time in the pool for an instruction, I wouldn't do any out-of-water during that time. If anything, I would do it at a different place and time. But the, the amount of out-of-water instruction that takes place is minimal, as, you know, in my entire history, both giving swim lessons when I was younger and supervising them as I've gotten older.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, did you, were you able to unmute? I guess she's having some problems. Are there, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
I'm not on mute anymore. I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, are there any, I don't think there are any questions, right?
No.
So hearing none. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
I move that we amend the 2020 pool rules to include swim lessons as presented in the material that was circulated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Councilmember Zoid Hazer, right? Yeah. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
All.
All those opposed? Thank you. I believe it was unanimous. And before I turn it over to the distinguished council president to begin the work session, I failed to have the town manager read the disclaimer for the meeting. Do you have it there?
Yes, I do. Sorry, I had muted myself. Just a reminder to all residents that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town website. That if there are any questions, we just ask that people raise their hands and use the, the raise hand feature. And I believe this meeting is scheduled to go until 8 o'clock. And if, for some reason, we get a situation where the meeting gets interrupted and we have to end it, we'll immediately end it and send out instructions on a new meeting.
Matt, I don't know, something happened?
Oh, am I no longer, am I no longer here?
I think you're back again.
Okay.
I was able to hear the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you very much. And with that, I will turn it over to our council president to...
Before Matt Zaff leaves, I just wanted to say thank you for, for working with the pool committee on this. And I appreciate the feedback that we're continuing to get. This is an unusual year, and I think it's important that we keep good track of how things are working and whether this initiative, in fact, works very well, or whether other things will as well. So, thank you.
And I want to say thank you, especially to the council, for, you know, agreeing to, you know, meet, have these special meetings as different things come up, so we don't have to wait, because it is very dynamic, and we might be coming back to you with more. So thank you all very much. I appreciate you taking the time and making the accommodation. And that, I'm going to go say goodbye, unless you need me for anything else.
Well, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. Tonight is actually kind of an experiment for us. We haven't done a long work session like this really ever, as far as I know. And it's really a chance for us to talk together and see whether we can make some significant progress on issues where short conversations haven't always been so fruitful. So I'm very encouraged that we're doing this, and I have high hopes that we're going to feel great when we finish the meeting. So the first thing I wanted to do is go over the committee liaison list, which we need to put together for the August Journal. I appreciate everybody's giving me some insights. The final version I have is still up for grabs, so I'll just read down through, and if people want to make more changes, we're certainly open to that. This was not a hard and fast process. So right now, and not everybody got everything they wanted, so I have to say that. But I also, when we get to the end of this, want to be able to go back to a comment Ron made about how we can deal with council interests that's beyond, say, two people coming to the meeting. So the first committee, the budget committee, I'd be the lead, and Robin the alternate. Communications, Barbara the lead, and Robin the alternate. Environment, Steve the lead, and me the alternate. History and archives, Robin the lead and Steve the alternate. Newcomers, nobody has signed up for, but it's not put together yet, so we don't have to rush to get that meeting together. Parks and natural resources, Barbara the lead and Franny the alternate. Pool, me the lead and Barbara the alternate. Public safety, Steve the lead. And again, this is a committee that's not fully formed, so the fact that we don't have an alternate yet isn't too troubling. The swim team, Franny is the lead and Barbara's the alternate. The tennis committee, Franny's the lead and Barbara's the alternate. The traffic committee, Robins the lead and Marty's the alternate. The citizens coordinating committee on friendship heights, which is not a committee, but we have to vote to have a, a designate for the committee, Steve the lead and me the alternate. With the audit committee, this is in the charter, Robin the lead and me the alternate. So that's the list. Does anybody have a really strong reaction to that list, a change they, they'd like to see made? Because I'm sure we can all wheel and deal a little bit here. Well, if not, this is the list I will submit for the journal to be on the August agenda. We have to approve this formally, and it'll be in the journal, and so people will know who's with each, each committee. Now, there were several oversubscribed committees. One of them was budget. There were at least three council members. Communications, Parks and Natural Resources. Those three committees in particular, people have, there were more than two council members who were very interested in serving on those committees. And so, Ron, you want to explain again how we would be able, if three or more council members wanted to attend, how we would go about doing that? Because I don't think it's true for a lot of our committees, but it may be true for some of them sometimes.
Sure. So the council and committees, of course, are both subject to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act compliance board has stated, if both a quorum of the council and a committee show up at a meeting, then it's really a joint meeting of both. So if you're anticipating a quorum of the council attending a committee meeting, then the meeting should just be announced to the public as a joint council-committee meeting. And joint minutes can be prepared as well.
That mean one set of minutes, or two?
One set.
One set, okay.
Yep.
So does that make people comfortable, feeling like they can come? It was very awkward with the communications committee when Barbara and Robin started, and Barbara left, and I jumped in, and then Barbara was ready to come back, and I jumped off. So it maybe would be better if we didn't have to do that kind of thing.
I have a question. So that, in terms of announcing the meeting and all, does that make a difference, Ron, or not?
Yeah. So if you're, if you're anticipating a quorum of the council showing up at a committee meeting, then the meeting needs to be announced as a council meeting as well, so that residents understand there will be a quorum of the council at the meeting, hearing about the committee business.
So, Marnie, how do you, how do you see that working? Do you have, you thought about that at all?
Well, I have thought about it a little bit. I think with the committees that are a little bit oversubscribed, like the budget committee, I would just announce ahead of time it was a council meeting and a budget committee meeting, and anybody on the council who wants to show up could show up. I think with some of the other meetings, we could try and pull ahead of time. But, you know, pulling ahead of time is, that is sometimes awkward. And so I think if there are committees where more than two council members say, they, they think that they would regularly like to attend, we should just announce them jointly as council and committee meetings, so we don't run amok.
So are you thinking that for the PNRC and for the communications and the budget committee? Is that what you're...
Those are the three that had more than two council members express a strong preference.
Yeah, I just think it would be good to have a plan, so that at the last minute, we're not sort of trying to get that all figured out.
That's why I thought we might just standardly announce those meetings as council and committee meetings, and then...
For those committees.
Yes, for those committees. And if only two people come, only two council members come, that's fine.
I think that's, I think that's great. That works for me.
Okay, yeah. I don't see that being an issue now. If the environment committee wound up having three council members want to come, we could do the same thing regularly for that, too.
Perfect.
I don't think we've had, been oversubscribed for the swim team, the tennis, traffic, or the pool committee, so...
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that, or can we say we're, we're done? Okay. All right. Well, the second item on our agenda is to talk about the proposal Steve has been working on for a stormwater committee. And Steve, maybe you want to take the lead on talking about that? Everybody should have a copy of the most recent version that Steve circulated.
Great, thank, thank you, Marnie. Can, can folks hear me okay?
Yes, well...
Okay, so first time using earpieces and trying to make all the technology work.
But we only see the bottom half of your face.
Uh, let's see if I can lift it a little bit.
Your full mug.
There, okay. A little bit better.
Thank you.
You got the cord there. So there's, there's a lot of material. I think we can discuss it as we see fit. What I'd like to do is, what I hope we can do as, as a council is to come together on what sort of a study committee is appropriate for the town. I've put together what I think is a reasonable working draft, but I'm completely open to a range of suggestions and ideas to improve it, refocus it. So with that, as just, just a lead-in, let me say a few more things about the background for this. I observed, and I think other members on the council observed or felt that there were, that we had a number of contentious town council meetings where we were dealing with building permit applications. And the, the, the upshot of that was the end of last year, the November 2019 timeframe, the mayor asked or tasked Franny and I to look into sort of what we could do to improve the building code. Without going through the full history of things from, but I'm happy to discuss that if anybody has questions. From that start, what we're looking at today is not jumping into any building code revisions, rather taking a, stepping back a bit and trying to identify what are the issues facing the town? What are the concerns of the residents? And in a thorough, structured process, formally approved by the council, try to identify or describe what those issues are, and consider what other neighboring jurisdictions have done to deal with similar issues, and perhaps put together some options for the council to consider in the future. The charter lays out the, the structure of this group. It would be five to nine residents of the town. The mayor would nominate those individuals for the council's consideration. Should be an odd number, so they can, just like us on the council, they can vote on issues and come to resolution. The mayor would identify one of those individuals as the chairman, again, for the council to approve. The idea is that this would be a very full and open process. So this, the charter establishes that this group would write a number of town journal articles to keep the town informed, and would hold at least one town forum for more open engagement, perhaps bringing some guest speakers from neighboring jurisdictions or other relevant subject matter experts to, to talk about things and give residents a chance to ask them questions. This started out, or along the way, this charter flowed from some ideas from the mayor to look at both stormwater and protection of the tree canopy as two of the driving issues for, or concerns for the town. But based on some feedback I received from fellow council members and talking with the chair of the PNRC, it became quite clear to me that PNRC is well along in the process of considering protection of the tree canopy and perhaps recommending some regulations or modifications of regulations to the town council. So it really seemed either highly duplicative or confusing to have this committee study the same thing that's already been looked at by the PNRC. But, but stormwater is, it is, I think, a, an issue. I should say that I think it's an issue. I know that a number of residents feel it's an issue, but actually, I think it would be the purpose of, one of the, the initial objectives of this committee would be to establish whether or not stormwater is an issue, and perhaps define what the boundaries of that issue is. Now, maybe it's more of an issue for residents who live downhill of other areas of the town. Or maybe it's an issue with smaller lots, or maybe it's an issue with larger lots. Maybe the tree canopy is a factor. I suspect it is. But it'd be great to dig up some of this information, and hopefully with the right resident engagement and the right subject matter expertise, people would be able to hold together the information to, to figure out whether it's a problem and keep the council informed. I would see, just like any other committee, I would see us having a primary and an alternate town council liaison, which means it just adds to our list of, list of committees to, to keep in touch with. But I think that's basically a good thing, just stretches us a bit thinner. I think because of the subject matter of, of this effort, it would make sense, and this was a suggestion, I think, from, from one of our, one of my fellow council members, to have liaisons from PNRC and the environment committee. And you might say, if, if PNRC is handling trees, why do they need to be involved in this? I guess it, they wouldn't have to be. I think it would be a good idea, because trees are such an issue to control in stormwater. And I would think that the PNRC would want to know what is happening. And, and twice first, I think that this, this committee would want to make sure that the PNRC is informed. I, I think that, that's sort of, in a nutshell, I laid out some responses to some Q and A. Those are largely responses to a subset of questions raised or suggested in email by Franny. It's not meant to be all-inclusive, but it should give you an idea of what I'm thinking about on some of these things. And I would like to emphasize, I, I may be presenting this, but I believe that I'm speaking for many other folks in the town that would like to see us address this or tackle this issue. And my, my hope is that this will get, just starting this process will, will make a number of, many folks in the town feel happy that we are trying to tackle it. There's one last thing I'd like to talk about, because it's an interesting subject area, and that, that is, there's this phrase I use in the draft charter about how we should explore how, how the stormwater management affects the enjoyment of residents with their, their property. And it's been pointed out to me that's, that's a fairly subjective statement. And the interesting thing, though, is that I extracted that statement directly from our town code. So I think that that statement, which is subjective, is perhaps, at least in part, behind some of the, some of the contention or the issues we've noticed at town council meetings, because some residents, quite, I think, quite reasonably have looked at that language and said, hey, this new house is being built. It's not adding to my enjoyment of my property, so, so you shouldn't, shouldn't approve the permit. But it's not that simple or direct. I know there's, there's some talk that we need to look at updating and, and changing some aspects of our town code, and that language might be an appropriate thing for us to consider. That's a very broad statement. What I see us doing with the stormwater committee, stormwater study committee, would be tackling a very concrete aspect of enjoyment of your property. There are many other things that you could look at with the enjoyment of your property, but I think it's pretty clear that if, if you are experiencing or threatened or worried about experiencing flooding or runoff damage, runoff of stormwater onto your property from the neighbor's property, and your perception is that that's been, that situation has been exacerbated by a construction project, well, then I think that this is something that we can tackle as a way of trying to determine what does or does not qualify as enjoying your property. That's it. I'm not sure what the next step is, Marnie. Maybe we go around and ask folks if they have comments or suggestions on how to improve the charter?
Well, I think that's right. And I know it's a little hard with Zoom to always read who wants to speak next, but I'd like to just open it up so that, you know, if, if Franny wants to say something first, or Barbara, or Robin, people should feel free that they can jump into the conversation.
I, I have a clarification, Steve. And I, I just emailed you about this, just for two things that you just mentioned. And again, I'm very appreciative of all the work that you're doing. I just want to, I'm getting an echo, or are other people getting an echo from me?
I'm sorry. It's my fault. I need to figure out how to turn off my computer audio. I had to call in. So let me figure that out.
You want to mute? I can fix it.
Let's see here.
Can you mute me, I guess? Let's see. Let's see, I can do it. Is that better?
No, you're still echoing.
Okay, I think I'm gonna have to leave the video and just stay on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave my computer.
I'm sorry, Franny, it's hard when you're in a place where computer connections aren't fabulous.
You wouldn't believe it. Northern Vermont is very, it's really a left behind area in terms of technology. I'm sure Matt could tell us all about it. But, I mean, I'm sitting upstairs and I have, I mean, there are cows in my background making noises. Anyway, I don't want to go out and order. I unmuted myself so that when it's my turn to talk, I do have a few things I wanted to ask about. But I can go after Barbara.
I just have two questions. But I have two very general questions, Steve, that I think I raised with you, but I'd like to raise them publicly. And that is, I just would like to be sure that the committee will address not just stormwater, but, and I don't know if this needs to be renamed. Again, I'm not the right person to ask, but that it's also going to include runoff. Because I think that's a very significant issue as well. And they seem to be two very different things. And then also, I noted that when you were just explaining it, it was as if we were only going to be looking at problems that were exacerbated by construction. And I wondered if we could also look at just problems that there are in town, not because of construction, just because of poorly placed gutters and the like. And I wonder what you thought about those two issues?
Great, and thank you for sharing your thoughts with me in advance so I could sort of prepare my thoughts. I guess I'll go in reverse order. So I just referred to the construction because I was thinking about some of the building permit, contentious building permit reviews that we've experienced in the recent past. But I agree with you completely. I think that this committee should try to understand, is there a stormwater, is there a stormwater runoff issue? And what is causing it? You know, some of it might be somewhat unavoidable because of the type of soil that we have in some or set. I know that I wanted to put in a rain garden and I did the one square foot perk test. And we failed in my yard. It just, the water just didn't drain out because of the heavy clay area. And you mentioned gutters. There are a whole number of things that we should try to understand. Came back to your first part of your question about runoff versus stormwater. I see them as inextricably linked. I'd be curious if Robin has some thoughts on this because I know he's researched the topic. But from my mind, the issue that people are dealing with is runoff. And what we need to have is effective stormwater management to control or limit that runoff. And the thing about stormwater management is we're talking about techniques or approaches, maybe rain barrels or rain gardens, as a, to sort of control the water onsite. The idea would be to minimize water leaving the site onto a neighbor's property or leaving into the sewer system. Because that's not good for the environment. Does that answer your question? Then maybe Robin can weigh in?
Well, I'm just saying, so are you saying, again, because I know so very little about this, that if we control the stormwater, that that will have a significant impact on the runoff from one neighbor's home to another neighbor's home?
I could step in here.
Yes.
I thought we were going, okay.
The county code at the moment, which is driven by runoff, and by that I mean precipitants that are contained on the ground, might be leftover pesticide, but most of it is fallout from gasoline powered engines, actually. And that stuff is the concern, that it gets into our waterways. But the county code, in fact, has a stormwater limitation. It says you should manage the first inch of stormwater on your property. And the reason why they have that connection is because the only way that those, that junk, that gasoline powered engine junk or the pesticide junk gets to the stream is because stormwater carries it to the stream. So that's why they are inextricably linked. They really are linked. And so when you're talking about stormwater, most of the time you're talking about runoff to the stream that's carried in the stormwater. Sometimes, though, the force of stormwater itself can be damaging. The other thing, the other point I want to make is that stormwater and building codes are actually separate issues. A lot of the stormwater interventions that either residents do or the town does, and the town can do some, are nothing to do with building codes. So you put in a rain barrel system. That's nothing to do with the size of your home or your building code. You're putting in a rain barrel system. You can put in a green roof, nothing to do with the size of your home. You can put in a rain garden, nothing to do with the size of your home. We, the town, have already put in, you know, a rain garden conservation landscaping that helps control stormwater and stormwater runoff. Nothing to do with the size of the home. So they are really quite separate, is what I'm trying to say. And the issue we really do want to focus on, I think, is stormwater because that's the major problem in town. We have recently had a candidate forum in which the majority of questions submitted across all of the possible questions were on stormwater. And it shows how much of a concern it is. That's all, I'll see for the moment, I'll come back.
But Robin, do you think that people understand? All the, I agree with you that those were most of the questions. But do you think most of those people understand the difference between stormwater and runoff?
I think, I certainly explained it in stuff I've written for the journal, you know, that's that. And I explained it also during the forum. I went, said pretty much what I said there. And at least half the town, I think, attended the forum. So I hope they got the message. I mean, it is that the way to control runoff is to manage stormwater. One of the major ways to control runoff is stormwater. And that's the point.
Okay, thank you so much.
Robin, I had actually sent Steve a few comments. And I'm going to ask one of them in the light of what you were just saying, which is if you look at the establishment of the committee, the second sentence, second line starts, "In order to define any problems associated with stormwater management in the town code." And it sounds to me like the issue was much bigger than the town code, that we were, I mean, the town code might be how you would address the problems that were identified, but...
Right, and it is one of the ways of addressing it. And it may not be a good way, actually. One of the things we need to find out is how much of the problem is happening lately, probably because of new construction in town, versus how much of it has always been here. And a lot of it has always been here, frankly. But there may be more as a result of the new construction. If there is more as a result of the new construction, it suggests we do need to modify the code. If, in fact, it's just always been here and it hasn't changed, then the code isn't the problem and we need to do other things.
I guess my suggestion would be, just in the establishment of the committee, that we might define the problem, maybe either a little broad, more broadly or differently.
Yeah.
What is the purpose of the committee?
Right, go back to Steve on that. Steve, it isn't to change the building codes, it's to manage stormwater. That's the...
So, and how did I write it in the draft?
Well, it's written right now, "To define any problems associated with stormwater management in the town code."
Yeah, so I probably should change, just remove the word "code." "Any problems associated with stormwater management in the town."
That's probably that. I think that gets closer to what I was thinking about.
Very simple solution, well done.
I'll start making some live edits here.
I don't know if it's my turn or not, but I...
We're not taking turns, just jump in, Franny.
Okay, I guess I'd like to talk about what we've just been talking about since we're all talking about it. And it seemed to be making some good progress with it. My, I guess my issue with the code aspect of this is that I'm always looking to see how and when the town government gets involved. And the way that we get involved in what residents do typically is associated with them asking for permission for something, whether it's, you know, to get a building permit or to take a tree down. And other than that, we don't really reach in to what people are doing. So while we may have a lot of people in the town who are, you know, following good practices in terms of managing water on their property, you know, if they don't come to us with a building permit, then we don't have any oversight over what they're doing. And, you know, the same goes for changes that they might make to their landscaping that might have, you know, an unintended or maybe even a careless consequence for their neighbor. If a building permit isn't involved, if they're not disrupting the soil under the county's rules, then, you know, it doesn't become a council matter. So I guess I'd just like to sort of, while I appreciate people saying that, you know, the intention of this committee is not to necessarily focus on changes to the code, I think it's important to remember that, you know, the council is not reaching out to people and saying, what are you doing to manage water on your property? Unless those people come in and are, by definition under the county rules, disturbing some percentage of their soil and asking for a building permit. So it's really pretty closely linked in my mind. And I would be very hesitant to suggest that the council has any other role in terms of, you know, regulating what people do. I mean, if you're not coming into the council asking for a permit, I'm not sure that we should be going into people's backyards and saying, you know, your neighbor is unhappy with your landscaping and so now we're getting involved. And we've talked about this over the years as wanting to, very clearly not wanting to have that role, that, you know, that people who are neighbors, who, you know, are talking to each other about runoff issues, you know, should be essentially talking to each other about those things and that the council is not, you know, we're not judges and juries. So I guess I just wanted to start with that. And, you know, that, I'm sorry, are you still there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's very hard for me to know without the video. Okay. So anyway, I wanted to be clear on that, that, you know, we really have to look at everything from the framework of whether or not somebody is coming in and asking for a permit. Because that process then gives neighbors opportunities for notice and opportunities for public hearing, opportunities to ask questions and so on. And without that framework, where it's really going to be very hard for the council to regulate this objectively. So I guess I just, maybe we could talk about that since we're in a work session mode. I do have a couple other comments on the charter, but I'd like to at least air that question out for everybody and see what everybody thinks of that point in this work session.
I'll start off and then I'll let other folks jump in. I think your point is well taken, Franny, that perhaps the primary way that the council interacts directly with residents is on permit applications, building permit applications. And it's, it would be a significant step to change those building regulations and start to impose, impose any number of different changes to what people can do in their property. But as Robin suggested, that's not the only tool we would have on the council. You know, we could establish a rain barrel grant program. We found that rain barrels were really effective at helping control stormwater. Or we could augment the county's or the state's, I think it's the county's rain garter program. I think there's a range of things we could do. I think the important first step is to understand what the problem is and explore what other communities have done and see what's worked and what hasn't worked and what the issues are.
Okay, well, I guess, I think that's good news that you think that that should be looked at more broadly. I think the other thing that comes to mind when I think about this is, you know, after all these years of sort of following along, when we look at building permits, you know, we're checking the box, do you have clearance from the county on stormwater or not? And a lot of our issues have come up in connection with properties that have gotten waivers. And I think, you know, I think one thing I'd like to just mention at the outset is that it might be important for us to just remember that, you know, properties that are not getting waivers have already come up with some kind of plan to manage that first inch of rainwater, as Robin mentioned. And if they're doing that, and yet there are still runoff problems associated with the construction project, you know, I think that would be where we would need to talk to residents directly about, in fact, the differences between stormwater and runoff. Because, you know, I guess I would wonder whether we would want to go beyond requiring sign off from the county. If we have sign off from the county that does not include a waiver, you know, are we then going to say, but that, you know, in fact, is not good enough because there's a chance that there might be increased runoff on your neighbor's property and the council wants to be involved in that as well? So I think, while I understand that the two terms are linked, I don't, in fact, think that they're the same. And it seems like the county is focused broadly across the county's, you know, all the land in the county on managing, you know, cleaning the water that goes back into the water table and especially the first inch where there's a chance of getting pesticides into the bay. And that, you know, beyond that, they're not particularly concerned about what happens between neighbors in terms of runoff. Now, if I'm wrong about that, you know, I guess I'd like to know more about what the county's rules are, you know, for runoff between neighbors. And if there are rules in place, you know, maybe we can learn more about them and find a way to opt in to something that's already in place. To me, that would make more sense than trying to write our own standards for runoff. And again, I'm generally pretty loath to get, have the council get involved in specific disputes between neighbors on runoff. I think everybody who's experienced a construction project near their house experiences the discomfort of the project itself. And, you know, we try to manage that as best we can with sediment control and things like that. But once the project's done, I, you know, and the building permit is closed, I don't, we haven't typically had a role as the council in sort of, you know, maintaining any sort of relationship between neighbors. And I just don't see how the council could possibly be expected to stay involved in that. I mean, you know, you could have people finish their building permit, or finish their building project, close everything out, and then decide to do landscaping that has nothing to do with the council. And the landscaping could cause the problems. And, you know, in the neighbor's point of view, it's all related to the construction. But in fact, we've closed the books on the project. And, you know, now everybody would, you know, you can see a situation where people might say, okay, now I have runoff problems. And the resident might say, well, I've already been cleared for stormwater management by the county. Anyway, so I guess I want to just, I don't want the terms to become so closely linked that they are interchangeable. And I would ask everybody involved in planning out the, you know, the purpose and the goals of this committee to really try to keep them separate. Because, you know, the county, the stormwater permit from the county is a stormwater permit. It's not really a runoff permit.
Again, Franny, the county stormwater and sediment control regulation comes from federal law to do with management of runoff, of pesticides and gasoline engine runoff. So-
But that doesn't necessarily solve a neighbor's problem.
And the neighbor's problem is part of a larger problem. The, if you're downhill of construction, you're not a neighbor, but you could well suffer from the runoff nevertheless. So some of the interventions do get at what the town can do. And not individual homes. To give you one example, the town can put in permeable pavers in the roads, in some of our roads, in some sections of our roads, to capture runoff at that stage. And it will reduce the problem of stormwater for neighbors down the line on the road and also reduce the problem of stormwater going into our streams. The town can, if it wants, also decide to act upon the county ordinance because we adopted it in our town code. And we can decide, okay, we are going to act on it because we're unhappy with the way the county is acting upon it. And then we can put requirements in at that stage. If we choose to, the town can do that too. But before-
I'm sorry.
All that, we need more information.
Yep.
And that's what this committee is about.
I'm very excited about the idea of finding out more from the county and having the county actually come in. We've talked about having that happen, and this committee is a perfect vehicle for some conversations with the county, both to clarify some things and maybe to see whether there are areas where the county law needs improvement. Because it may be that that's a better place to tackle this issue than Somerset itself. But I guess just to summarize, part of what I'm hearing is, Steve, in terms of the establishment of the committee, it sounds like you've got some ideas for how to sort of rewrite that to capture some of the concerns that people have raised, both in terms of the clarity of the words that are used and the focus on defining the problem. Is that-
If I could, if I could return just to my list of questions. I mean, I guess all I was saying before is I just wanted the stormwater and runoff terms to not be used interchangeably. And I'm asking the people who are looking into forming this committee to be conscious of choosing the one that most closely reflects what we're talking about. That's really what I was saying. I don't, I do understand that they're related, and I do understand that the county views them as related. But again, when the building permits come to us, they're looking to see about stormwater. But back on my list about the proposed charter, I wanted to talk about the, and I don't have my document up in front of me, but the language about the health, safety, general welfare, and enjoyment of the residents. I guess since we have talked about whether or not that language should be in the code in the first place, I'm just wondering whether, if I could ask if we could talk about taking it out of the charter of this committee? Because I don't think it really, it needs to, I don't think it really needs to be in here in order for there to be a committee. And I think it sort of adds in the subjective language when it's not necessary in order to form a group that's going to study issues. And since we're talking about whether or not it should be in the code anyway, I wouldn't like to have a committee sort of be leaning on that language, you know, for its purpose. I think it has other good reasons to be formed, and I would ask if we could talk about taking that language out.
Yeah, I agree with Franny on that.
That's fine. From my perspective, it provided some focus or purpose to the committee. But if it causes confusion or angst, I'm happy to remove it.
I mean, as it is, Steve, the language is in the code right now. And I think it, you know, to the extent that it's affecting, to the extent that it's being relied on to people who are coming in front of the council to talk about active building permits, you know, we do need to deal with it and to figure out how to apply it. But I would not like to have it moving forward. And I don't think, like I said, I don't think it's needed here. I think you have a lot of other, you know, sort of good and reasonable reasons to suggest forming the committee without adding in something that has to do with something so nebulous.
Franny, thank you for your concerns, but look, there are some things we really don't know, and it would be useful for the council to find out.
That's not, I have no problem with the study group coming forward with information to the council. I'm asking for this language to come out of the charter for the committee.
You're trying to say whether we want to focus on stormwater or we want to focus on runoff? You can't separate-
That's not what I'm talking about right now. I've asked the working, the work session to discuss my idea, which is that in the proposed charter language, that we take out the phrase, "Health, safety, general welfare, and enjoyment of residence" from the proposed charter of this stormwater committee. I'm not talking about the content of what the committee looks at. I've already moved on from that.
If I could just add, if we get to it, if we have still time tonight, I have a list of code changes that come partly from Doug, partly from work that our council did before, partly Franny, partly Ron. And one of them is this issue of health, safety, and so on, because it has been something that has been sort of starred several times by a variety of our consultants and council members as causing us problems because of its subjectivity. So I'm just adding that.
Perhaps because of the language that gets at managing water on their property because that's really what we're talking about.
That's fine. I agree. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so I think we're all in agreement that we want a little bit more careful definition of what the problem is. And we have some ideas we've given, Steve, about how to get there.
I do have one other thing on my list for the proposed charter, if you don't mind, Marnie, since we're trying to, you know, trying to get this done. It's just back onto the consultants. I'm a little confused about sort of where we ended up. I guess, you know, I had made the comment earlier that I, you know, sort of wanted to know why the charter was limiting the committee to having one consultant. I mean, our arborist and our, you know, building inspector are consultants. I'm sorry, hello?
I can hear you.
Okay. My point is that we-
Just talk in and out. Okay.
Okay, well, I'm on a landline, so I'm sorry, but I am on a landline. So anyway, my point is that the charter language still says that the council will approve the hiring of one consultant. And I'm just not sure what the point is in limiting the committee in this way at this point, considering that the council would need to approve any expenses for the committee and a budget for the committee and hiring a consultant anyway. I mean, when we had the tennis committee come forward to look at, you know, redoing all the courts, you know, we had to hire a tennis consultant, but then we also had to hire an engineer, and we had to hire, I don't know, there might have even been a third person. But, you know, I guess I don't see why you would start out by saying that the committee is going to have only one consultant, especially since that seems to rule out any use of our existing consultants.
Great question. That is probably just, I'm an engineer, not a lawyer in terms of the specifics of the language. Why don't I change that to say the study committee determines that the support of consultants is necessary? And then continue. Yeah.
That would be fine, yeah. I guess I would like to leave open the possibility that we're talking to people who already know the town and work for us and can give us, you know, very tailored advice. And, you know, so I wouldn't want to rule out having those people on our team.
Perfect.
And then, I just had one other, and this is sort of a nitpicky question, Steve, but just on your responses to my questions earlier. I had asked about whether the committee meetings would be open to the public. I mean, whether they would be, whether residents would have the opportunity to ask questions, and your response was that the meetings would be open to the public. Now, I mean, here we are in a work session right now. This is an example of something that's open to the public. But the public does not have an opportunity to ask questions during our work sessions. That's how it's set up. And so I guess I'd like, just, I think it would be good for us to know maybe, you know, how normal, our normal committees work, you know, people who attend those meetings who are not on the committees, do they have the opportunity to ask questions during those committee meetings?
Okay, I better understand your question now.
Okay, thanks.
And we might need Ron to weigh in on this. Because all I know is from my experience on the, as a liaison to the environment committee, and I guess when I served on PNRC years ago, noncommittee members of the public could come in and speak and talk during the meetings. But I don't know if that was just an informal approach. I really don't know what our town code says.
My practice was to allow them to speak, not to vote. That's really the difference. And that was it.
Ron, do you have any additional comments on that?
Sure. So the charter, town charter does not dictate whether or not the public has a right to speak at committee meetings. So it would be up to the individual committee. And maybe some meetings are open, maybe some meetings are work sessions. It depends on the needs of the committee.
One of the things I wanted to ask about is, my sense was, every member of the council was interested in being part of this committee in one form or another. And Ron, I need your advice on this one too. I think we could, the charter, the code says we should have a liaison, and we could have one person like Steve, who's been spearheading this, be the liaison. But is it possible that every other council member could serve as an alternate? Or just come?
Sure, we are. The meetings won't be open, so any council member could attend anytime they want. The code does say there shall be one liaison and one alternate.
But that's for regular committees. This is sort of an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, you could do whatever you want, frankly.
Okay. But if every council member wanted-
The code addresses the difference between committees and ad hoc committees.
I guess I then have a question, Ron. I mean, you know, just listening to what you're saying, it sounds to me, you know, with my lawyer brain, that, you know, the council might want to actually clarify what we want this committee to do. Because if you're saying the committee can do whatever it wants, you know, I guess I would be concerned that the committee could vote to have nothing, you know, nothing available for the public or no council, you know. I think, I just think we need to say what we want this to look like. If this is an ad hoc committee, we need to, as a council, I think, decide what the ad hoc committee is going to do in terms of those things.
I thought, Jeffrey, I thought we were not having ad hoc committees anymore.
That's what Jeffrey said, but this is a special purpose committee. It's not a standing one.
I don't, I'm only going to answer the question. No, there's, the intent is no more ad hoc committees. All committees are going to be presented to the council for approval like this one. And then Marnie has another suggestion, which will come later.
But this is, the other committees are like standing committees. They've been going on from year to year. This committee is a time-limited committee for just one purpose.
Because that's the charter, that's what the charter of this committee is.
Okay, I do have a couple more things on my list. I'm sorry to-
Oh, that's good.
You put so much time on this, but I'd like to keep moving it on. If I could ask about the budget for this committee? And then I'd like to finish by asking Ron about how, who controls access to storm drains in our town. But just to start with the budget, I mean, we have already revised our budget this year to, you know, we're getting advice from Matt that, you know, we're going to, not this year, but next year, we're going to see a change in our income. And, you know, we have not budgeted for a $50,000 project. I'm using that number from Marnie's summary of, you know, what the other towns. I guess she had two numbers, one town was $50,000 and one town was $63,000. And, you know, we don't have that in the budget. And, you know, I guess I just, I think we need to talk about it before we sort of go along creating a committee, you know. Are we creating a committee that has no spending authority from the outset? Are we going to amend the budget to allocate $50,000 for a committee? Or, I mean, where are we finding that money, if so? And if we don't give money to this committee, you know, sort of what's the point of getting it going now when it does need to spend some money? And should we, in fact, form the committee at the same time that we discuss the budget and make an actual plan for what we're willing to spend on this? Because, you know, what I'm afraid of is that we're going to get so far down the road of sort of organizing this committee that we're going to be very invested in it, but yet not technically invested in it because we actually haven't approved any money for it, and we have some significant concerns to think about for our spending.
Can I jump in for, since I'm the one who put together some of the estimates of what other committees spent? I mean, the other communities took a very broad look at a whole lot of issues in their communities. They did detailed looks at lots, block by block and so on. I mean, and so they looked at a lot of different kinds of things. I think this is a very different committee, the way it's been focused. And it seems to me that the committee members would be able to do some of the work themselves. We already have some work Ron's put together. Paige has put together some work. I'm sure committee members would be able to do that as well. We got, Doug is a stormwater person, right Doug? Well, he's there. I think Doug is a storm-
Yeah.
Yes. Ron to help us out with some issues. We do have $5,000 in the budget. Given what we're talking about, which is a relatively narrow scope committee with some town consultants potentially available, I'm not so worried about their getting started and kind of coming back with a huge budget. I really think that they can, committee members can take some role in doing research here.
As I understand this request, it does not have a budget with it. It is to establish the committee. And then if the committee needs spending, they do come back to council and ask for that. Is that right, Steve?
That's it, exactly.
Well, I mean, I recognize that, and that's why I'm raising it. But I guess what I'm saying is that if we spend so much time talking about a committee tonight and what it looks like and how it works, and yet we, you know, in fact, are not willing to spend the money on this, I don't know if we will be or not. That's going to require the vote of a council on the budget. But I guess I'm saying, you know, I recognize that Steve's not asking for a budget tonight, but there's no point in talking about this tonight unless we also talk about whether or not we're going to fund this.
But we don't know how much might be necessary. It's a bit of a catch 22.
Then we should talk about it. Then we should talk about it.
I don't think we can come to those conclusions, Franny. Partly, it will depend on how the committee is set up and defined, its purpose and so on. And Steve is going to be doing some rewrite of this on that. And then when the committee members are recommended by the mayor and the council approves them, they'll convene and they'll sit down and talk about what it is that's going to take for them to be able to undertake whatever's in this charter.
Okay, well, this is the kind of conversation I was asking for. I just didn't want to, you know, when I was looking at the materials provided for this meeting, I recognize that the other towns did much broader projects, but, you know, those numbers are not insignificant. And I think when people start talking about issues, then they end up sometimes expanding. So, you know, I did think it was worth raising tonight that we just understand where we are in the process. So, you know, I did think it was worth raising tonight, that we just understand where we are in the process.
Yeah, the other point, Franny, is that I certainly hope the committee goes into areas that we have not anticipated in our discussion tonight. And those areas may or may not have budget implications, and so we can't possibly read what those are going to be. We've got to let them come back if they get to that area with whatever requests they need.
No, when you say that, Robin, that doesn't give me much confidence in terms of, you know, framing the purpose of this committee. Or, you know, I guess we are talking about stormwater and runoff.
Franny, Franny, I'll try again, we're lacking information, okay? If we find out, if we find out that, after a survey is conducted, more of the problem is coming from recent construction versus longstanding construction, then I expect the committee to actually come in with a request for an urban planner, to help with changing building codes. If we find out that, in fact, most of the stormwater runoff problem is longstanding and not related to new construction, I expect them to come up with maybe a landscaper request to think about what other things we can do to slow runoff in our town. So it depends on what they find out.
Well, Robin, I would hope that if they come up with building code issues, they'll be relying on things like the table that Ron put together, doing interviews with nearby communities that have put in place stronger stormwater, talking to Doug.
Of course.
Well, this is the conversation I was hoping for, that we would be talking about what the budget constraints would be at this stage, and what we should expect in the future. I, I, you know, I wanted us to be talking about it tonight, and that's why I raised it. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be funded, or that it shouldn't be, you know, hiring the right kind of consultant. And I do understand, I do understand the problems that Steve has raised, you don't need to think that I don't.
I, I guess I would like to ask a question of Ron if I, if I could. Because he did through this with a number of different communities. And, and I've read the, the emails that you've sent around, Ron, but if maybe you could just share your, your point of view in terms of successes in communities, whether those that have done it on their own with residents, as compared to those that have done it, this, this kind of study with residents and with consultants, just the success rate. And more importantly, in, in terms of the, how the community fared in terms of a community, were, did, did it bring the community together? Or did, if they used a consultant, or did it tear the community apart if they used a consultant, or vice versa? If you could just, since you've been, you know, you've been through this with a variety, in, in a variety of different situations, if you could, you know, share your knowledge on that.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. I, I don't think success depends on whether or not you rely on, on consultants. I've, I've seen both scenarios, and both be successful with and without paid consultants. When paid consultants have not been used, the jurisdictions have relied on in-house expertise, for lack of a better term. There are many professionals in, in Somerset, you know, that could, could provide information and recommendations. I, I think it, it might be worth pointing out that Somerset is a bit different, because you're, you're almost tackling three issues at once. You know, when I, when I talk about the other towns and their retention of an urban planner, that was really to review the building regulations. And, you know, urban forest regulations, stormwater drainage regulations were, were done separately, they don't have to be. But, you know, I just wanted to point that out, because you are tackling a lot at once, potentially. But that said, you know, this charter, I think, has, has the right approach. You know, first it's information gathering, and then, if the committee determines after gathering information, that the committee should proceed, and that a consultant is necessary, and then, the town council could discuss the information that's been gathered today, the committee's recommendation, and then make the policy decision of whether there is an issue that requires further action, and that requires the expenditure of public funds on consultants. Does that help?
Yes, that helps a lot, thank you. But I hope everybody heard Ron, and that he said that he thinks we're tackling a lot. I, 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 I hope we're all, that we were all, our ears were wide open for that comment.
Well, anyway, I had, I had only one other question, but I think I'll hold off on it for now, I think it's too specific for what we're talking about tonight. So I'm finished with my list for tonight, if somebody else has questions for Steve.
I, I have an easy question, which I raised with Steve, just on the forums, and that if we could ask Steve to, uh, say, to hold at least two town forums.
Yeah, I'll do that.
I'm so successful with the Healthy Lawns Act to have two, and it gives people, you know, two opportunities to learn.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Town forums.
Are there other comments people want to make?
I, I had a question or comment, and this might be more for, for Ron, but I was actually surprised to hear him describe this effort as, as trying to bite off a bigger chunk than some of our neighboring jurisdictions. I see this as a, as a more narrowly focused effort to tackle a specific measurable issue, stormwater runoff, as opposed to more subjective things like, like Town and Chevy Chase really tackled the question of McMansions. And, so that was a hot button issue, and, and they had to bring in that type of a community planner, and they were looking at the heights of buildings, and we're not doing any of that. Or at least not directly.
I mean, I guess the reason I think it becomes, it has the possibility of becoming a bigger issue, and as I said at the beginning, very closely tied to the building permit regulations, is because if we're not, you know, willing to go forward with what we've been doing, which, you know, the community has made clear that they, they, you know, doesn't work from their point of view, which is, you know, we've been saying essentially, do you have your stormwater clearance from the county? Just as if we're saying, do you have your pest control report? And if you do, then check, and if you don't, why not? And so if we're now inserting a, you know, a level of review over what that plan is, whether there has been a waiver granted, whether we think the plan is sufficient, even if there hasn't been a waiver granted in terms of controlling runoff, that does inject, you know, a, a new level of review into our building permit process. And again, you know, I said at the beginning, you know, residents come to us when they are applying for a building permit, and if they are not applying for a building permit, then we are not, at, at the moment, we're not involved. So, you know, you might be, let's say you're, you've decided to put, um, you know, a patio in your backyard with flagstones or something like that, you know, that wouldn't typically involve a building permit. That's a landscaping job, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't come into us. But, you know, you're changing the permeability of the lawn, you may be affecting runoff. I mean, you may put, you know, put something in your backyard that, or, that changes everything for your neighbor, but has, has no role at all in terms of the town council. So if you, if you are going beyond what we've been doing in terms of looking building, at building permits, then necessarily you're expanding into, into that type of legislation, and into that kind, level of oversight. And, and it becomes, I think, as we all understand, that, you know, when you add regulation to a building permit, it does become more expensive for the person who's applying for the permit to comply. And maybe we could make the argument that it's, you know, a, a drop in the bucket in terms of the scope of the projects we're talking about, and, and maybe it's good for our community, and good for our streams, and good for the earth, and there are a lot of good reasons to do the right thing. But when you require people to do something in a certain way, that's not just sort of hoping that people will do the right thing, that's actually getting involved. And so I, I do think there is the risk of us going very close to that, if not straight into it, with this level of analysis. I understand right now the committee wants to gather information, but I, I'm highly aware that this is going to get into those discussions.
Well, if I could add, and perhaps clarify my earlier answer, you know, I, I think Stephen's right, the, the charter is limited to the issue of, of stormwater, and that is a, a narrow focus. But I, I tend to agree with, with Franny, I think ultimately where you're going to end up is looking at all three of these issues. You know, there's a whole bunch of materials in the package tonight, and they address all three areas. And, you know, although I don't know what particular issues may exist in Somerset, you know, I can say generally, I represent nine other jurisdictions in the area, and a, a general common theme that I've seen is, the county storm drain is overburdened. It likely was not designed with contemporary construction in mind. And so several jurisdictions have looked at, how do we address the prevalence of subpump discharges to the street? And the loss of green space, which eliminates the natural infiltration of stormwater. And so, you know, water's running off to a greater extent than under, you know, prior construction methodologies. And so, you know, I, I can't guarantee where you're going to end up, but based on my experience, I, I would not be surprised if the study group were to find that stormwater issues are getting worse, because homes are getting bigger, there's less grass available to naturally infiltrate water, and the county storm drain system is overburdened. And so, you know, other towns, in, in response to that, have looked at ways to have homeowners try and capture some of that stormwater on site, so that it can infiltrate on site, rather than running off to a neighboring lot or to the right of way. Maybe it's not an issue.
I can say again that, um, it isn't a necessary movement to building codes if we discover that, in fact, are greater recently than in the past. We, the town, can do things ourselves, that include, as I said, permeable pavers in some of our roads that can help to manage the problem, grants to some of the residents to help to manage the problem. These are not building code issues, they cost us money, but they're not building code issues. There isn't a direct connection between finding that the new buildings are causing a bigger problem, and therefore fixing our code. That's what I'm trying to say.
Right, thank you.
Is there another point anyone else would like to make? Steve, you feel like you have more than enough comments to deal with to rewrite the charter?
Yes, I've actually been making them as we go. Minor, from my perspective, they're fairly minor edits, although they certainly do change exactly how things will happen. And I think they better define what the council wants. For example, two public forums, explicit statement that public participation is welcome, is part of it, stuff like that. And a clear focus that we're talking about, defining any problems associated with stormwater runoff in the town. And I've removed the comment about health, safety, general welfare, and enjoyment of residence. That's really...
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we now have a slightly more focused document. And I guess what I do is I'll, I'll, I'll firm this up, and I can send the edited version to everyone just for your reference, to see how I changed it. And I can provide the final draft to, to Matt for our meeting in early August, for us to consider voting on. And, and then the mayor can start thinking about building this committee.
I, I guess, thanks Steve, I think that's awesome, sounds great. I just want, now wonder whether I could ask Ron my question about the storm drain system, since he brought it up. I, are the storm drains in Somerset owned by Somerset, or are they owned by the county?
They are owned and maintained by the county, for the most part, and have found in other towns that private drains have been added here and there. But for the most part, it is the, a county storm drainage system.
So when we, like, repave one of our streets, or build, you know, like we did on Fallstone, we built higher curbs in order to direct water down the middle of the street and into the storm drain at the bottom, you know, there were runoff problems from Fallstone onto people's property. And, and, I mean, Larry Plummer was the one who identified the solution to be channeling the water into the storm drain. Now, I mean, that's not going to do anybody any good in terms of stopping gasoline from going into the storm drain, but that was the solution that we came up with at that point in time. And that has solved, I believe, the runoff problems that, that, you know, people had raised. And I'm just, I guess I've always just wondered, you know, why we don't make more use of the storm drains in town in order to address the, you know, address the runoff problems, um, not just from the town streets and from the town properties, but also between neighbors. And, you know, anyway, you know, I know that that's information that the committee needs to go and find out about, but, you know, to the extent that Somerset has some control over it, I guess I'd like to know more about what kind of control we have.
Sure, yeah, I, I think the committee would definitely want to study what improvements the county is making to the county storm drain, because I understand improvements are being made. And I can tell you, in, in some other towns, we've had experiences where subpump discharges, you know, may have been creating pooling on the sidewalk or on the road, which can present ice hazards in the winter. And the county has a, a, a general position of not wanting additional subpump connections to the storm drain system, because it's already overburdened. However, in certain instances in these other towns, you know, Martin's Editions and Section 5, I believe, the managers were able to negotiate a connection for a handful of residents in particular problem areas. And so there, you know, it's a, a mixed bag. The, the town regulates the portion of the right of way, you know, from the subpump to the drain, and then the county regulates the drain itself. So the homeowner needed two approvals, one from the county to connect to the county system, and one approval from the town to run a discharge pipe underground through the public right of way.
Does a resident also need county approval in order to repair a drain?
To repair a, a county drain?
No, to repair the connection between their property and an existing drain to the, to the town, to the county system.
Yes, in a nutshell, the, the county does require, in those instances, that a maintenance agreement be executed, and that maintenance agreement is recorded in land records, you know, which does state this connection is private.
There are systems in place, there are systems in place at the county level that could be used by residents in the town Somerset, and especially if we were able to educate them on how to do it, or, or act it as advocates for them.
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful, I, I don't mean to take up any more time on it myself, but...
Just, just a quick point, Larry Plummer's solution was what I call a pre-2010 solution, which is to clear the waters quickly and efficiently from the residents, and put it into the storm drain, and just get it out of here.
Right, but I mean, it, it did lead to some good safety solutions, because that was a very dangerous area for the town, especially in the wintertime.
If, if the same thing were being done today, it would not be that solution, is the point. And it would still be safely managed, I assure you. But the whole idea today is to slow runoff, try to capture as much on the original property. When you're slowing runoff, you're dropping the precipitants out of it, they fall out. And so the water is cleaner when it lands in the storm drain, and so that's, that's what...
Right, so, and when you raise, you know, when you... And when you raise, you know, when you raise the possibility of the town addressing this problem on the town streets, that caught my attention as well, because it seems to me that, you know, I wouldn't, you know, want us to be putting burdens on the residents without the town also looking at how it could mitigate this problem on our property.
Correct. Yeah. Right.
One other thing I could point out with the Fallstone, with that Fallstone corners, the town added a substantial amount of grassy area there and took, so the lot that looks like it's the Albert's Lot is, a lot of that is town right-of-way that is now grass rather than a big asphalt curve.
Grass is slightly better than asphalt, yes.
Yes. I just want to go back to the Storm Management Committee. Were there any other comments, for example, five to nine members, anything about the membership people wanted to raise, or everybody's okay with everything?
Well, I had, I had written to Steve. Again, I, I captured this from Ron's memo on the, on the composition of the, of the committee. And Ron had, had mentioned, and again, it seemed like a good idea to me that we have an architect, just as possibilities, okay? An architect, a builder, maybe a stay-at-home parent, and possibly a, a senior citizen wanting to age in place. I just want to make sure that the committee is representative of the entire community.
If we're nine people, there'd be room for all kinds, I guess, so...
Yeah. And I just want to, so I just want to make sure, because it's pretty specific at this point in the charter. And I wondered if we might want to just take a look at the, the wording that was in Ron's memo in terms of composition of the committee.
I'm, I'm happy to add some areas of expertise or remove some areas of expertise. I would like to emphasize that there is the note that the mayor shall be, shall strive for diversity.
Right. I wasn't sure. Diversity is such a, it's a very general term. And even like lawyer, you know, I, I would hope that we would look for a land use lawyer. I think that would be really important. We have a lot of lawyers in town, but if we could have a land use lawyer, I think that would be super, super helpful.
Yep. That's what it says. An attorney with expertise in land use law.
Okay. And then, yeah, I don't know. I think it would be useful. We have several architects in town. I'm not sure if we have any builders. There are plenty of stay-at-home parents, and obviously we have many senior citizens that are trying to age in place.
Okay. Well...
I just bringing that up for discussion. I don't, I just wonder what other people think about it.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought a little bit on this would be that we have to, you know, we have to sort of look to see what the committee is going to be doing. And a lot of committees are sort of more discussion-based and a little bit less, you know, work-oriented. And so if we're looking for a group of people who are going to do the bulk of the work that we need to have done, you know, maybe we need to focus a little bit more on their expertise and a little bit less on their sort of personal characteristics. I, I guess that's my thought. I mean, you know, if we're saying that we're not really going to be relying a lot, we're spending a lot of money on outside consultants, then, you know, maybe we're being a little too idealistic by putting all of these characteristics in.
I'm not denying it. I'm, I'm not denying it. I just wanted to raise it.
Yeah. No, I think it, I think it's not something we usually do for committees. It's to sort of put in, we don't usually put in this level of detail in terms of who we want on town committees. Usually it's sort of like willing volunteers who have an interest or a connection, right?
Right. Exactly.
And, and we don't sort of look for anything too, too specific in terms of their skillset. And, and I think this committee is different in that respect. So I think it is a smart idea to raise that, because by putting it in the charter, it may make it difficult for the, I don't know, maybe it makes it easier. It may, it just is different. So let's see how it works for the mayor. If the mayor can't find people who fit into all of these categories, then maybe he needs to come back to the council and say, I just don't have enough volunteers to kind of cover these spaces.
I like the idea, Franny, which is we don't use all those different categories. We accept diversity as, as the general term and expect that will be achieved by the chair of the committee and by the mayor.
But that's...
Let me just add quickly that that recommendation is more appropriate if you're doing a, a global character review of the town. If, if this review is focused just on stormwater, it would be less important.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
But if we could just talk about the composition of the committee again, I guess I would like to know, maybe the mayor could, could talk about whether the mayor plans to ask for volunteers, or whether the mayor plans to sort of identify people and ask them on his own. So could you, could you tell us a little bit, Jeffrey, about what you have in mind?
This is, I think that, this is Councilmember Circo's legislation, so I think he can answer that question. I don't think, as I've said over and over again, I don't think there'll be any problem finding people to serve on the committee, but...
I thought you said you had lots of people already.
This is Council...
Steve is not composing the committee.
Yes, he, yes, he is. This is Councilmember Circo's proposal, not mine.
Oh, Steve, are you...
No, but you're, that's not what it says. So the mayor will provide...
Why don't you clarify that? Why don't you clarify that?
Okay. So my understanding is that this committee is, is basically like any other committee in the town, and, and therefore the mayor will formally propose the, the, the individuals, the candidates, and the chairperson to the council for approval. But what I've done to try and facilitate this process is I've written a journal article for the August Journal that talks about this, lays out the original draft of this charter, and asked for volunteers to reach out to the mayor.
Well, okay. I mean, we hadn't finalized the charter yet, so I'm a little surprised that you published it at this point. But in any event, I guess it sounds to me like you're asking for volunteers.
Yes.
Which is good. Okay.
But, you know, since we've had this discussion about the range of expertise we're looking for, maybe that is sort of an awkward statement in the charter. Maybe it doesn't need to be in the charter.
Yeah, that's, I think that's Barbara's point. Maybe I'm misspeaking, but it sounds...
All right. If I could just, I'd like to save a little time for another topic.
What I missed, Steve, I, I got a call, so I didn't hear what Steve said.
Okay. Go ahead.
I said that, from my perspective, this is just another Somerset Town Committee, and therefore the mayor will be formally introducing or proposing the candidates and the chairperson to the council for approval. But to facilitate that process, I've already written an article, and it's going to be in the next month's journal, that concludes with an ask for volunteers, for the volunteers to volunteer to the mayor.
Did you explain it all in your article about the, what you're looking for in terms of volunteers?
Yes, but it might be sort of buried. We might look at a, it's a good discussion here. Maybe Matt can do another one of his email updates.
Let me just say that we can't advertise for anything until we know how many, until the council approves how many and what the specifics are. So just in general, on the basis of Steve's lots of communications, many people have volunteered. So I, and to answer Councilmember Pio's question earlier, I don't think, which I answered several other times, I don't think it will be a problem to find people to serve on this committee.
I'm sorry, that, but that wasn't my question.
Yeah.
My question was in the article, Steve, just because, you know, as Jeffrey said, many, many, many people might be interested. And, and the selection process, which I guess you're going to be doing this, be doing that, I think it would be good for people to know a little bit of, about that, you know, how, how that's, how, I mean, if, if the article is written and you've asked for people to volunteer, they, it might be nice to say something that, or, or maybe not. I don't know the best way to handle it, quite honestly. Or how are you planning to handle that? So are, where, where you cut out was, are you asking for people that are environmental specialists or land...
I asked for exactly what's in the draft charter that was sent out to you folks.
Steve, maybe you could circulate...
Real estate professional, attorney with expertise in land use, a person with expertise in gardening trees, a person with expertise in stormwater management, a person with expertise in conservation landscape design, and other residents with the time and intent to work in this intensive and time-limited study.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, Steve.
You know, I think would be super helpful, from my point of view, with when this comes up for a vote. I guess I'd like to, you know, I mean, we do often get statements from people about why they want to be on committees, but I think I'd really like to understand specifically why the, the proposed slate, why they want to be on the committee. I'd like to have an opportunity to talk to them about it, and I'd like to have an opportunity to ask them questions and so on.
I think that's a very good point.
Instead of rubber stamping this.
I think it's a very good point, because years ago, I suggested that anybody that I nominated to committee that I attached, that I, I asked for a bio or some kind of...
Basement of interest.
Interest. Right. And then there were council, then, then council members said they didn't, they, they thought that was a burden on the nominee. That doesn't mean that you can't have that this time. That would be...
I think this time is different.
I do, too.
I, I think, I, I'm totally, I, I agree, because I thought it was a good idea for, I think it's a good idea for all committees personally, but anyway.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Put that in there. Put that in there.
Can you determine that, vertical, Steve? Is it too late?
I do, I don't know if it's too late, because...
It's still too late, because it, the advertising for the committee members won't take place until after the council confirm, you know, approves the committee. So it's, so it doesn't start. I've already, I, I've said to people, I think you've seen in communication, that it, that once the, I think Steve put this in his article, that once the committee is approved, that anyone that, that contacted us previously needs to do it again.
Right. Right.
So just to make sure we're all on the same page for process. So Steve is, has already been editing this, and you're going to circulate it to make sure everybody's comfortable?
Right. Marty, I'm sorry. I just, I had one more question about this. I guess, I guess what I'm trying to find out, and, and because this is a different committee, I'm asking this question. Normally, I would not ask this, and I would just, you know, when we, usually when we get slates for committees, we just, they're practically, I mean, they're on the consent agenda, for goodness sake. In this case, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more. I'd like to know, not just, you know, I, well, it sounds to me like there's, there may be volunteers who won't ever come to the attention of the council because the mayor and Steve are going to determine what the slate, the proposed slate is. So I'm just trying to understand how, how we can kind of, yeah.
I have no intention of having anything to do with the slate. I don't want to see the people before anybody else in the council.
That is what I said. That is what I said. It'll be advertised, and then people, and then the, the nominees are confirmed by the council.
I know, but I had the impression, Jeffrey, that you were saying that Steve was going to put the slate together.
I never said that. And I, Steve was going to, perhaps you weren't listening, going to write an article.
Right. I'm just trying to facilitate the process.
You can understand why I'm confused, and I'm just trying to understand what it is. I'm not suggesting that anybody has any bad goals here. I'm just trying to understand, because Jeffrey said that it's going to be Steve's committee, and so I was trying to understand if that meant...
I know, I did not say, I said it was Steve's.
Okay. Well, Jeffrey, I am sorry. I can't go back to the video to find your exact words, but that's not the point. The point is, I still didn't understand, and that's why I'm asking the question now, is to who is forming the slate. And it sounds like Steve is saying he is not doing it.
Right.
Also sounded, can I just jump in? It sounded to me like Steve has written an article, and he said there'll be an interest in volunteers. The article predates the council approval of the committee. If we're all in agreement, this, this will be on the agenda for the August meeting. Steve has then said there'll be a call put out after that for volunteers.
Yes. Yes.
And at that time, we'll have the exact charter for the committee and what it's going to do, because I think Ron pointed out that this list was maybe a little more appropriate for the broader look at the community rather than what this committee is chartered to do.
Yeah. I'm just a little confused then as to why Steve wrote an article before this was approved.
I have a suggestion on that, which is that Steve circulates the article to all of us, and if the article makes any of us uncomfortable, then let Steve know, and maybe he should withdraw it.
Well, I think generally as a council, I think this, just generally speaking, council members should not be publishing information about what the council is going to do without council approval. I think, I think that is, in terms of a working council, I, I, I don't think that will help us work together. I think if each of us starts going off on our own and sending in articles to the journal on what the council is going to be doing before the council has approved it, I think we will end up...
I'll say the article. I very clearly do not say that the council is doing it. All I say, saying is that the council is going to be discussing it at this work session tonight, and it's my hope that it'll, that the revised version will be brought to the council for a vote. And I felt that it was very important to have good communication with the town, because not everybody listens to the town that's served, or the, it's just another communication forum to keep people up to speed.
But you asked for...
I'm not short-circuiting.
Did you ask for volunteers?
I said that the mayor is interested in volunteers. People are interested in this topic.
Steve, I, I think Robin's suggestion that you circulate what you wrote would be calming for the council.
I'm happy, happy to do so.
Mind sending that around?
Happy to do so. And if the mayor has not approved the final version of the August Journal, we're happy to make some edits, too.
The Journal's already been put to bed.
Okay, so it's too late for that.
Okay. So then there's no reason to circulate it.
It can be circulated.
Yeah. I don't think we need to, I don't need to read it myself, but I guess one point which we talked about is that, you know, we got together tonight to talk about the proposed charter, and we've already made a bunch of changes to it. So, you know, that, it, it makes me feel like the article, the document that went out to the community has, you know, is already stale in that sense, right?
It's very clear in the article that changes are anticipated in the charter that was presented. I don't think it will confuse anyone.
If we could just get back, if we could just get back to the source of my confusion, I, I would just appreciate hearing one more time exactly what the process is for creating the slate for this committee. And I don't know if that's going to come from you, Steve, or from Jeffrey, and I will wait to hear what the process will be from one of you guys.
Well, I'll start, and then I'll let Jeffrey clarify or correct or add some extra insights. I, I am hopeful that the council will agree with the edits I've been making based on our discussions tonight. And hopefully the council will approve this charter, the Stormwater Study Committee Charter, when we meet in early August. And then following that, I would expect that, you know, one of these town of Somerset announcements that Matt puts out, the, the mayor can make a formal request for volunteers, and we can post the entire approved charter for residents to look at. And then the volunteers will come in, and the mayor will make his, and, and, and this, this request for volunteers can, can ask for a little bio or statement of why people want to volunteer. I think that's a great idea. And then Jeffrey will exercise his, his judgment and his expertise to figure out who are really the, who, who gives us the diversity of professional experience and cultural and resident diversity to really capture the various interests and capabilities of the town, and he'll, he'll provide a recommended slate to the council for approval, for consideration. slate to the council for approval, for consideration. Does that sound about right, Jeffrey?
Except that it's not a slate, it's a list of nominees that the council will be confirming individually. There have been other committees that have been sent over recently, where the list was not completely approved, and the council will have the opportunity to do that, you know, probably in, I would guess it would be in September or October.
Right, thanks for that clarification.
Does anybody else have any questions before I sort of lay out where I hope we're going now? Okay.
No.
You're set? Okay. So-
Thank you.
If, so Steve is going to send something around, I would encourage people, if they've got any issues still with the draft, to send comments back to Steve, so that what goes in the council package is something we won't wind up needing to do a lot of amendments to at the night of the council. Does that sound reasonable to people? Okay.
Yeah.
That works. So, Steve, I know you're, you've been working on this all through the meeting, so I know you'll get something out soon, and the council packages have to be done by, like, next Tuesday or Wednesday. So, if you want to give Steve any additional comments, you need to do it right of way. I did have some other issues for tonight's meeting. We have nine minutes left, and one of them would be fairly straightforward, and I'm glad Doug is on the phone, because Doug provided us with a list of ideas of things that he thought would be helpful in clarifying how the application of the code. One of them relates to the same issue that we've been talking about, the health, welfare, and safety. That's harder. But if you've got Doug's memo from July 20th, he had just a few language changes that he thought we should make. I thought we ought to talk a little bit about the boundary survey, but I think most of what's on his list could be dealt with in a meeting. We might need Ron to work with Doug on what would be the substitute language to clarify. Ron, did you, Ron, have you gotten a copy of Doug's memo? Yeah, okay. Franny, you had something you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that, that when I looked at the code, Section 112.5 refers to a building survey, and I'm not sure in practice whether that's the same thing as a boundary survey, but I guess I'd like to know if that's the same thing. And I would be in favor of looking at a way that we could reduce the expense for residents for small projects. So, I would like to find out how we could improve that part of the code, if necessary, but I did want to ask if boundary survey and building survey were the same thing. I don't know if that's Doug or Ron, who might answer that.
Franny, where does building survey appear?
I think it's, well, Doug was the one who flagged it, not me.
112-5-
112-5.
1E. But I wasn't asking us to go through these tonight, because I don't think we have enough time to do that. What I was asking was, is the council willing to do sort of a little cleanup with these, if Ron and Doug could work together on some wording that we could consider at a council meeting?
I mean, I guess the answer to that is yes. Yeah, I mean, we, but we do have, I mean, some of these are meatier than others, so I, you know.
I think on Doug's list, the meaty one is the first one, 112-1, about the purpose of the code and the health and safety part.
I mean, absolutely, but then, you know, when he asks for also requiring language that, where we require Montgomery County permits in 112.3A, you know, I look back at it, and I'm just not sure that we always have overlap in those areas. And so, there may be some things where there is no Montgomery County permit, but that we do require a permit for Somerset, so.
That was specific to-
I'm a little hampered by not having my Doug's memo open in front of me, but anyway, I just, you know, I-
It seemed to me that if we could sort of agree that this was a doable list, with the exception of the first item, that if we could get Ron and Doug to propose some language, maybe we could make corrections to the code that would make it easier for Doug to administer it, and for our residents to deal with it?
It is a great idea.
Sure, it seems very manageable.
I'm in. Barbara, were you, did I- I said I'm in, sorry. You're in. Okay. I do think we should talk sooner than later about the issues of health and safety in the code, and make that part of it. I agree. And that's the top of Ron's list. Ron also has some other things on his list that I thought would be relatively easy to deal with, and then some that were hard. So, the things about the appeal time, the Mayor and council, clarification about the fence, I think we can do those fairly readily. The driveway aprons may be a much harder one, and ADUs may be harder, too, but we could tackle those. But it seemed like there were, between Doug and Ron's recommendation, a number of sort of just cleanup items that we could dispose of over the next few months, understanding that we'd have to agree on language, and then it has to get introduced, and then it has to get voted on in another meeting.
Can I just make a suggestion, though, Marty? If what we are doing, in fact, count as cleanup items, could we, I mean, I guess I just wonder whether we want to go through the process of introducing a separate ordinance for each one, and if they're, if they're sort of housekeeping items, I think it makes more sense to have one ordinance and, you know, have a number of different sections that we amend, you know, all at once, so that we don't have to keep sending new stuff to General Code and everything. I don't know in practice how that works, but it's just something to think about.
Should be possible.
And even though, what?
Sorry, I think that should be possible.
Yeah, I just, I just think it, even though the issues are small, and they are piecemeal, that if we have a different ordinance for each one, I, you know, I just think it gets a little, you know, we're going to get very tangled up in our scheduling, you know, introducing something one meeting, and then discussing it the next one, and so on.
I like that idea. Well, we would, even if we did them all together, we have to introduce them at one meeting and vote on them at the next, but I, I didn't-
I know, but we don't have to do it one at a time.
Right, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Ron and Doug, do you think we could come up with sort of a cleanup list?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I can work with Doug to draft an ordinance for these types of cleanup items, and we'll save the more substantive ones for later council discussion. And this is what I would call a technical correction ordinance, and one ordinance will cover the several amendments.
Yeah, and you'll take care of the council vice president ones in this one, too?
That's right.
Okay. So, my last question in my last minute here is, did people feel like having a chunk of time to deal with a substantive issue worked better than our 30 minutes ahead of the meeting?
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yes, we never would have got through this.
And I also, like, I have to say, doing it a little earlier, rather than starting at seven and going to nine, starting at six and going to eight.
Yeah.
If Ron and Doug could have things ready for us, would you want to do another mid-month meeting next month?
I'm available.
Sure.
Sure.
Could people, could everyone do, what do people think about doing it from five to seven?
It, for me, it just depends on the day.
Okay. Well, six to eight is fine, too. I just wondered.
Why don't we wait and see when Ron has something ready, and then we can try to schedule at that point?
Well, I think because it's, I don't think it's going to take them a month to do this. Are you thinking about doing it now, Marty? Should I get my calendar? I would, because we're running out of time, and- I'll be right back. Okay.
Wait, are we scheduling our mid-month session to talk about the technical correction ordinance?
That was my question, too. Thanks, Franny.
Okay.
Because it seems to me that that's the kind of thing that would be very simple to get through at a council meeting.
Usually, we have to look at the-
If it's all fairly straightforward.
There's, there are a few questions around fences, and I would want to, at that same meeting, talk about the health and safety, or it's not safety, health and enjoyment one. That will be a hard one, but I think we should, we owe it to ourselves to try and decide whether we can put that one to bed, because it gives us trouble.
Yes, no, I agree for sure. I just didn't know what you were talking about scheduling for.
Well, if you, the little work session agenda I sent out lists sort of toward the, and I think sort of the, a bunch of things about the code. And so, my proposal would be that if we can, do a mid-month meeting next month, that it won't take, have Doug and Ron put together the cleanup of things. It was things like, how should porta potties be screened? I mean, there were a bunch of things like that. And then, that won't take us very long. There might be some questions, but it won't take us very long. And then, the big one we would talk about is what to do about the health, safety, enjoyment, and so on phrase, and is there a substitute, or what do we want to do about that? And that may take us a while.
Well, I guess I would just ask, before we try to tackle that conversation, I mean, I think this is something where I really would want to know whether there is language comparable to that in other towns' codes, because, or in the county code, you know, or whether that's something that's sort of an outlier in our code. And if it's included in other towns' codes, then maybe we can get some interpretive advice from Ron about how it's put into practice. I mean, our problem is that we've never really known what to do with it. So, I guess I think it's a little bit more, it would require a little bit more advice from Ron, and I don't know whether he'll be ready to do that by the middle of the month or not. I guess that's the question, really.
Ron, off the top of your head, do other towns that you work with have, in their code, a phrase like that?
No, they do not.
Well, that's easy. Okay.
I mean, it's more typical to find something like that in a variance process, which says, in granting a variance, the town council may impose such conditions on the variance necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and secure the closest performance of the code intent and purposes. But just under a general permit review, it's odd to have something like that that's not tied to substantive criteria.
Layers in the subjectiveness, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, people were talking sort of mid-month, six to eight, on Wednesday, the 19th. Does that work?
Yeah, for me, it does.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Well, let's put that down.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
You know, Wednesday, the 19th is the Democratic Convention, and that's the night the president, the Vice President makes her speech.
Oh.
Just so you know.
What time, what time is that?
Six to eight.
Hasn't been announced yet, but just-
Probably be later.
Just so you know.
It would be later.
I have no idea, but I just wanted you to know that there'll be a lot of programming, and so I just-
And I have a meeting at 7:00 PM on August 19th.
What, do five to seven? Would that work? Ron, does that work for you?
It does.
I can make that work.
Does that work for you, Doug?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, five to seven PM on the 19th, Marty? Yep, that's what we got.
Good.
Well, I want to congratulate everybody for doing a really good job. I felt like people made great contributions and had a very good conversation, so thank you very much.
Here, here.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We're past our time, so. Great. Everybody, thank you. Effective meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.